Emergency, some special use, we have them there at our disposal. They haven't been used for a long time. Any questions on this?
We don't have to do anything.
You just have to vote.
What's that?
You have to vote to approve the 1%.
We do, so we need a motion for that?
Correct.
Council President, I recommend that the restricted funds authority be increased by an additional 1% for fiscal year 2425.
Just out of curiosity, how much is in the fund currently?
After, so at the end of fiscal year 2425, the restricted funds authority balance will be $13,276,060.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Shirley.
Over the last five years, can you describe how these funds have been used, if any?
They have not been.
They have not been used?
This is our emergency fund.
Yes, we've had no emergencies to use the funds.
Not big enough that we've had to dip into these funds.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, everybody vote, yea or nay?
It's okay, I have a feeling we'll have plenty of time.
Try it again?
Yes, please.
Okay, motion passed. Item 3B.
Item 3B is the fee schedule. I'm going to open the redline version of the fee schedule. I feel like that's easier to explain where we are now and where we're proposing to adjust to in next fiscal year. So there are not too many fee adjustments, a couple in the Aquatic Center on page two. The department heads for these affected departments are here. This did go through a public finance committee as well and through the council committee reports for the public's knowledge. So you've seen this several times already, you've had this for a number of weeks. Some private swimming lesson additions, facility rental at the Aquatic Center use, we're moving to a per-use fee structure rather than an annual facility use agreement with the school for their swim team. And then some minor changes to the parties and concession vending fees. I'll jump to the plunge. Can see here, there's some minor changes and then group swimming lessons are adjusted as well. Cemetery, Doug did a full comparability review of comparable cities and their cemetery rates, so this is based on Doug's recommendation after doing that.
At least he didn't argue any attendance.
Minor change to the community development moving permit items. And then, community development, some minor adjustments. Any questions on any of these, please let me know. This whole section on permitted to occupy the right of way has been moved. And then the code enforcement has moved to Police Department. The Police Department budget in here, you'll see. Here's where those preliminary plaits are adjusted. Again, if you have any questions, we can go through those. Golf course rates per the Golf Pro contract, these rates are set by the Golf Pro and approved by the City Council, so these are rates based on the recommendation of the Golf Pro. He is here, if you have any questions. Library made some minor adjustments to their fee schedule. Frankford Square, at the request of a council member, we added a fee for events in the square that are, have the ability to create a profit. Here is the code enforcement, the nuisance and abatement code enforcement issues moved to the Police Department section of the fee schedule. I believe that's about it. Some bulk water filter rate, water fill station rate, and that is it. Do you have any questions, or does the public have any questions on the fee schedule?
I do.
Yeah?
On the Ponti Park and the plunge and the Aquatic Center, we're now charging $3 to someone that's just standing and watching a grandchild swim? And we're not, we're doing that at the plunge, but we're not doing that at the Aquatic Center. Is that correct?
Where is Betsy? Yes, let me look, let me open it up here. Sorry, I thought Betsy was behind me.
Go back to page five or six. That's where it mentions non-swimming, not dressed to swim, and not the guardian of the six under swimmer.
Oh, yes.
And we're not, but I did not see that with the Aquatic Center. Do we want to add that to it?
I will ask her about that.
Okay.
I'm not sure, maybe they do charge at the Aquatic Center, but it...
They haven't charged me the last few years.
Okay.
What would be, and Betsy's not here, so it's not a fair question, but what would be the validity, what's the reasoning behind charging grandma who's in her street clothes watching the grandchild standing there?
I believe we had a lengthy conversation about this last year. And it was just that, you know, they're, they still have to be observed, they're in the facility, they're sitting on benches, they're, you know, going to the concession stand, they still, there's a cost of, a base cost of service for a body in the Aquatic Center or the community, or in the Ponti plunge, and I think that's where we ended up last year. But always up for discussion. I'll certainly ask Betsy what the policy is.
It might be worth, yeah, yeah.
For the non-swimmers.
If I remember correctly, one of the other things were they, they take up a chair or a seat or a lounger.
Bench or...
Yes.
Which on a very busy day, I understand that, yeah. Okay.
Any other questions?
The only thing I'd like to say about the fee structure, and I made this comment at one, at the committee hearing when it was discussed, we, we get caught between a rock and a hard place many times because we're asked to provide an amenity that we know doesn't pay for itself. And yet, we try to come up with a fair admission fee or golf fee or whatever it happens to be, because we're trying to balance between, we want the usage, but we need to try to get some value back for what we're providing. So I hope the, you know, the public needs to understand it's a two-way street, that, you know, we really want and need to provide these amenities, but there also needs to be a balancing act between what we can, you know, what we can charge and what's fair and what's equitable. I really like that, I can point to Doug if somebody tells me the, the golf charge is too much, I say, go, go talk to Dunbar, don't talk to your mayor. But I do think it's important, because we catch a lot of flack off of fees and things that come up for change. But we've put a lot of time and effort in. Staff's done studies, staff's done comparisons, you know, we're trying to find that balancing act, is all it is. So, okay, I'll be quiet.
All right, with that, I would entertain a motion.
Bet me.
Move the fee schedule be adopted?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Go ahead and vote. You're still absent. Motion passes without chilling.
All right.
Item C, pay plan.
Item 3C, I will open up the track changes document again here. Through the course of the budget process over the last several months, we've had several meetings talking about wages for city employees this last, or this current fiscal year. Within the last couple of months, we finished a citywide wage and benefit analysis, and we used that as the basis for any adjustments for next fiscal year. So, any positions that were below market rate according to the study will get an adjustment to come up to the bottom of the market rate range. Some of those adjustments can happen within a pay grade, so we don't have to move the position pay grades, and some of those hap, some of those changes have to happen by moving that position title to a different pay grade because it was too far behind market to get adjusted in its own grade and catch up to the market. So, we have the pay ordinance here showing the culmination of all of that work, so it will be reflective in the budget document on item 3E. We will not be doing across-the-board cost of living adjustment because we had that pay study done. This is similar to what the City Council did back in 2019, the last time that a wage and benefits study was conducted for all city employees. I do want to note that you'll notice fire and police are not in here, the exempt employees in those departments are the chiefs and, but the other employees are not part of this, they're unionized, so we will have to follow their union contracts and set their wages in probably about a month after comparable communities set their wages for those departments, and we'll have to make adjustments at that time, so we'll share that with you at that time. Do you have any questions about the pay plan or overall? I guess it's worth saying also that the entirety of the wage and benefit impacts, the fiscal impact of making these adjustments for next fiscal year is about $170,000 in total for all general, across all general funds, an increase in wages of about $170,000 across all general fund departments excluding police and fire.
Any questions, council, public? Not, I'd entertain a motion on the pay plan.
I recommend approval of the pay plan for fiscal year 2024 to 2025 as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Go ahead and vote.
Just one question first. Terry had said $170,000, how's that different from the 45,950?
It was the two spreadsheets together, the 116 plus the 45.
Okay.
The other question would, would be the, the sister cities and their increase, what was that, average?
All other sister, all of our sister cities are doing an across-the-board cost of living adjustment, and they're between 2.5 and 3%. I believe the average of all of those cities was 2.9, so most of them are doing three, a few of them are doing two and a half. Fremont is doing two cost of living adjustments throughout the fiscal year. So, we'll adjust down the road as we do more wage and benefit studies, but making these changes brings us comparable based on right now. And then going forward, we'll likely recommend similar cost of living adjustments to at least try to keep pace as other communities grow those wages. I think that's the best course of action, that's what we've done so far. And this year, we are, it's a significantly less fiscal impact than it was back in 2019 when we did the, this the first time when I was here. It was significantly more of a fiscal impact at that time, so I think you've done a good job over the last several fiscal years of, of managing this and taking action each fiscal year so that it's not so difficult at one time.
Okay, are any other questions? If not, go ahead and vote. Motion pass. Next item is item D, capital improvement plan.
Okay, I'm gonna open up the capital improvement plan. Again, this is substantially similar worksheet to what you have seen for the past several months. Really, department heads finalized their capital requests months and months ago. For the last two, three months, we've been meeting periodically, talking about the budget as a whole, but obviously the capital improvement plan is a big part of the budget. So we have a number of projects across all departments. As a reminder, we have the 1% sales tax that is voter-approved to pay for capital improvement in the city of Columbus, so that is the funding source for this capital improvement plan. I'm not going to go through item by item, because we have done that, and you've had this in front of you a number of times, but I am going to jump to the discretionary capital improvement items, just again, for your sake and the public's sake too. All of the other items in the capital improvement plan are really deemed by the department head and myself to be more, you know, operations and maintenance-related, more needed items. And the, the extras, we have, last year, implemented a discretionary capital improvement process where we pull out those items that are more discretionary in nature, put them in a list, and then all of you elected officials rank those discretionary items, and then they're listed in their ranked order by elected officials, and they're funded based on how much funding is left, from the highest priority down until the sales tax is used. So you can see here that the yellow projects on the top of this list are the carryover discretionary capital improvement projects. So these, excuse me, are projects that are in the works right now that will not be, that will not be wrapped up this fiscal year, but will carry over to next fiscal year. So that's the yellow portion of this table. The blue portion is the discretionary requests for this year in their ranked order by all of you. And the blue are the projects that will be included in the budget excluding the exercise equipment at Charlie Lewis Station at, at this time. So the blue, we again went from highest priority down until no other projects could be funded with cash and drew the line right there. So that's what you're seeing in front of you right now. The rest of the discretion, or the rest of the capital improvement plan are the enterprise funds. Enterprise funds, as you all know, are not tax-supported, they are funded wholly by their user, so wastewater, water, solid waste, excuse me, and then the only, the, and stormwater, excuse me. So that is the capital improvement plan for the whole city. If there are specific project questions, or probably open it up to see if there's any comments from the public too, but any questions from you all that I can answer first?
Well, I think it's important to stress, and you did right when you opened this discussion, but it can't be said enough, the use of these funds is already structured by the way the referendum was passed on the sales tax. There are only certain things we can do with this money. You know, oftentimes you may hear a comment from the public that says, well, why'd you do that with that money, why didn't you do something else with it? Something else may not have been approved on that bonded, on that voter-approved referendum, and we are bound by that.
Yes.
It's not something we might like to take and do something else with, we are bound by it, by the voters. It's changed a couple of times within the percentage of how it was originally put together, but the items have always remained the same with the addition of economic development being one portion of it. And again, I'm sorry, I'm preaching, but I think it's very important because, you know, people just don't understand, the format is how it was laid out, and we are bound by that.
I would like to draw the council's attention to the email that Chief Gray sent earlier last week. I felt like I had to clarify a few things with him, and he was gracious enough to send me some answers also and some pictures. But at our last budget meeting, we did discuss removing the exercise equipment, and while nothing was kind of said then, I do believe that with the compelling information that Chief Gray had sent that we should reconsider, and we did rank it right in the middle of this list, so $10,000 I feel would be appropriate and require those resources that our first responders may need to conduct their job a little better.
Any discussion?
There is, and Chief is here. Chief, there is some exercise equipment down there at Charlie Lewis.
Good evening. Yes, currently there is an old bike and two weight benches that our personnel have brought down there for the meantime, that's correct.
How does that compare with the North Station?
It doesn't. The North Station is pretty heavily stocked, it's got a couple treadmills, stair stepper, and we're not trying to get to that point down there.
Understood.
Simply, we don't have the room anyways, even if we wanted to. We're simply looking for a treadmill and a weight rack system with some free weights to provide, to provide that for them, so. And one of the key things was a space saver treadmill that can fold up to save some of that space, because it's, I think you all have seen that area, it's, it's not the largest area, I mean, it's enough to get some equipment in there, but nothing, we're not looking to outfit this like the YMCA or the Field House.
Right. Well, I've always said that when I call 911, or this, any of the citizens call 911, they have to be confident in the fact that we're sending the best equipment and the best people. And if it takes $10,000 to keep our people the best that they are, I'd like to see it put back in the budget.
Thank you.
I, I also wanted to say, I wasn't a part of the council when Charlie Lewis was staffed, but I do appreciate it as a citizen then, so I also agree with you that that's a great investment.
You gonna make a motion to put it back in?
I want to make a motion to replace and reinstate the Charlie Lewis Station exercise equipment for the amount of $10,000.
You have a second?
Second.
Just curious, so if we move forward with that, does it have a ripple effect anywhere else or no? That $10,000's there, it's gonna be used whether or not we use it, right?
The, the $10,000 will be received. If you don't put budget authority to spend it, it won't be spent.
It'll just sit?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
But our, our total is seven, eight, 53, and our target was eight, so we're well under...
You're $146,000 available to you.
To, to use, okay.
Go ahead, go ahead. I was just gonna ask, out of curiosity, on, on all of the budget items, whether it's the $10,000 or the $650, if they can, like Chief mentioned, if they can buy a treadmill and free weights for 3,500, what happens to the other $10,000? Or whatever it may be for any other discretionary item, where does that balance go? Do they just spend until they're spending them out?
No. No, we don't allow capital improvement funds approved for one project to be diverted to another item or project or anything without council approval. That's always, there's been a number of times, let's, I'm trying to think of one in this fiscal year. This fiscal year, we had in the budget an electronic sign, to move forward with an electronic sign, and it, all the support kind of fell away for that, so I, it was several months ago, but we came forward and asked for those funds to be reallocated to the playground that's gonna be east of this building, and you approve that. So we don't make, administration does not make those decisions, I don't want to make those decisions, those are decisions that the council should make. So only the project as described here uses those funds. If they go unused, it builds the fund up. I don't know why that just got out of there, but, so that's also why we have a sales tax reserve fund too.
I think the other thing that's important is although these are all items going into the budget that will be part of a living document the next fiscal year, any one of the, every one of these items still comes before the council, before it's finalized and...
According to the purchasing policy, $10,000.
Well, yeah, I mean...
Anything under 10 does not come back to council.
Excuse me, but the major expense items come before us for future discussion if needed. Thank you for clarifying that.
All righty, we have a motion and a second to replace the line item that was taken out for $10,000. Any other discussion? If not, go ahead and vote. Go exercise your heart out, Chief.
Okay, so we need another motion for the whole capital improvement plan though. I would say amend as amended, so recommend approval of the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2425 as amended.
Okay.
Or, you already changed it, Sharia? You're good?
Yeah, sir.
Oh, I thought we were doing two votes.
Probably should you do it on the amendment. I would...
Didn't we just? So we put it back on, and now all we're doing is approving it?
Yeah.
I, I, I just think we need just to approve...
I totally agree. I think the last motion was just to add back the $10,000, as, as Cynthia said, and now we need a motion to, to approve the whole capital improvement plan with the addition.
And that should be the form of the motion, is that correct?
Yes.
Council President, I recommend approval of the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2425 as addition.
Ask me.
Addition of, I just wanted to... Okay, recommend approval of the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2425 as amended.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, go ahead and vote. Okay, now you can go out and exercise. Thank you. Last item is the actual budget.
Item 3E, I'll start at the top of these attachments and go through them each. All of the things we already talked about all contribute, are all pieces of the budget puzzle, but here is the rest of them. Obviously, property tax has a, it's a hot topic, so I'll try to go through this as clearly as possible, and we are still under current or past laws related to budget and property tax levies, so right now we're under the maximum allowable growth legislation. We are not under the new legislation that passed this special session that will be next fiscal year, just so everybody, you guys understand that, I know, but so the public understands that too. We're not, that is not going to affect till later on July next year. So we're under the maximum allowable growth legis, legislation right now, or how the probably average person thinks of that as the pink postcard. When you get the pink postcard, who's listed on that is exceeding that maximum allowable growth legislation. The city didn't... The city did not, was not on that postcard. Last year, we lowered our levy by in excess of 7%, if memory serves me right. So we are, we were not on the pink postcard, and we are proposing that we not be on the pink postcard again. We'll have to slightly lower the levy again to accomplish that. So you can see in this property tax memo that the City of Columbus, our jurisdiction, had very strong growth. And I'm gonna try to, this year, the growth equates to $361,210.50, or 5.39% of our budget. So I know I get this question a lot if I go out and talk to the public, so I want to explain where, for us, for the City of Columbus, where that growth is going, why we need to take that growth. And I know, again, all of you understand this, but I think it's worth explaining to the public. We need that growth, especially this year, because in the last, this current fiscal year, we did make a very big commitment to fund a second fire station. And the total fiscal impact of that each fiscal year, for this coming fiscal year, that's about $1.33 million for one year. And that's, the mass majority of that is just the wages and benefits. So the city was able to do that because we've been very fiscally responsible, very fiscally conservative, but it definitely did put a major crunch in our budget. So we do need this growth in property tax revenue to support that commitment that the city council made. So I wanted to say that for the public's sake, because yes, the levy is going down, but yes, our revenue is going up a little bit because of growth. But we do need it for that purpose. You can see here in the table that Heather put together that our actual rate, our levy rate will be .291203. By next budget meeting, I'm hoping that we can have our chart to show where Columbus is compared to our sister cities. I think last year, we were fourth from the bottom. So compared to all of the other cities of comparable size in Columba, or in Nebraska, excuse me, we are definitely on the low side for the levy rate. And this difference number here that I have highlighted, that is what we're foregoing. Stay, so by dropping the levy, we're foregoing this $34,284.08. So that's why we recommend that we go ahead and drop it, because even if we maintained our current levy rate, it's certainly not worth getting on the pink postcard and trying to explain this very complicated topic for $34,000. But is there any, that's really the Cliff Notes, simple version of where our property tax is going to be for next fiscal year. Is there any questions or comments?
Not a question, but another... Not a question, but I think another comment. And again, I think this goes to the public to try to make sure they better understand. We're often, you know, a comment we often get is about property taxes and about possible debt that we might have. What debt do we cover with property tax?
Not one dollar of debt is backed by property tax in the City of Columbus.
My goodness.
Yeah, we do. In the eight years I've been here, we have issued some debt, but that, you know, fire station, voter-approved, police station, voter-approved, this building, voter-approved, those are all backed by sales tax. We have $0 of debt backed by property tax. And all the other debt that technically the City of Columbus holds is, the mass majority of that is under the enterprise funds. It's like the wastewater treatment plant. We've got probably presently about $40 million of debt related to that new treatment plant, but that's all paid for and backed by the users, the rate payers for wastewater. The customers pay that. So, good question and a common misconception.
And as an example, like on the police and fire, which was voter-approved as being paid for by the half-cent sales tax, that will sunset when that, those facilities are paid off. And for the general public's knowledge, what were those bonds issued at? Or approximately, what's the interest on those bonds?
Fire and police, off the top of my head, it's less than half a percent.
Thank you.
Because it was, the only positive of the COVID era was very low interest rates, and we were able to capitalize on that for fire and police. And we, during that time, we were also able to refinance some other debts and saved millions of dollars over several years because we were in a financial position to be able to do so.
Also, would you explain what our bond rating is?
Sure. We are double A right now for the City of Columbus. We, I think it was, what month did we do that rating call, Heather? Maybe four months ago, we had a rating call, and it went very well. I believe when I started here for the City of Columbus in 2017, we were a B minus.
Yes, yes.
So we've done, you've all been very fiscally responsible. You've taken good action over the years, and we're in a very good position. And I, one other thing related to that, I think, worth mentioning, and we talked about it today. We had Senator Fisher here for a tour of the community building. And the federal government has brought back appropriations for local government entities. And last year, we got excess of, we got approved for a little over $3 million for our highway project, the city's portion of the highway project. So I felt like it was really important to explain to her how fiscally responsible the city is. So we were talking about the funding for this building and explained to her that this, this $32 million project that we were giving her a tour of presently has only $11 million of debt on it, and we're, we've only been here for one year. So I think that's something you all should be really proud of, too. We had about $8 million of cash, about $8 million of donation. We just did permanent financing for the library portion and paid down that $10 million note to five with cash, with sales tax cash on hand. So I think we're making really good financial decisions for the future of the City of Columbus. Any other questions or clarity I can provide related to property tax? We will, once approved, we will update that budget guidebook that's on the city's website with numbers for next fiscal year. I think that's been helpful. Anytime I get questions or anything related to budget, I always send that document, and it seems to answer all the frequent questions people have.
And I think the percentages we often talk about will be finalized, like you say, in the very near future. You know, but recognize that the city represents 16% to 17% of your property taxes. The school, 65% to 67%. And, and then the county, you know, 10%.
The county and the, us in the city are, us and the county, excuse me, are closer this fiscal year.
Is that right? Okay.
The county might actually be higher than us. We'll, we'll get those percentages in that budget guidebook. Okay, if that's, if that's the last of the questions for that item, I will move on to the sales tax receipts by type report here. You can just, this is really just a history of sales tax receipts. So it's, we've talked a lot about the Capital Improvement Plan is funded by the 1% sales tax. Fire and police and the library portion of this building is funded by the half-cent sales tax. The operation of the two pools is funded by the half-cent sales tax. The Columbus Economic Development Plan receives up to $425,000 annually from sales tax, and that's also voter-approved. So this, this document really just shows you the history of all of that. The last document is the budget report, which, again, you've seen over the last few months in mostly the same format. What's different here is those wage and benefit study results or impacts have been implemented into this document, whereas the last three meetings we've had, they were not implemented, they were held off to the side, but now they're implemented. This 164-page document shows how each department is funded and how they have, what authority they have to spend during the fiscal year 24, '25. All, these first three pages are really the general fund overview. So everything except our enterprise funds, again, enterprise funds are, have zero, $0 of tax dollars to support them. They're solely ran by their, the user rates, so water, wastewater, transfer stations, storm water, solid waste. So this, these first three pages really give you a high-level view of all other departments. So everything else is wrapped up in these three pages. And then if you want to drill down into department-specific spending or allocations, you can do that throughout this document. You can see this transfers out line in, on page three. That is the transfers out to the various departments. So to support the operations and maintenance of those general fund departments is about $13.3 million. Fire, police, library, cemeteries, parks, all of that is in that line item. Are there any questions I can answer for you? Or, or your department heads can answer for you about this document? It's available for the public's review, obviously, in this agenda packet. If anybody has questions, we're always happy to sit down and explain all the details of this. We understand it's quite a lot to review and understand.
So in a nutshell, if I wanted to say the city's business for the fiscal year is X amount of dollars, I think like in 2000, this past fiscal year, we had about an $89 million budget. What would we be saying this year's budget is? As a, as a ballpark?
96 million.
92, 3. Thank you.
I don't know if anybody from the public wants to speak to the budget before you...
People have come in, and hopefully, you're here to speak to the public hearing on the budget? Not, uh, do we need to entertain a motion for this budget? Is that correct? Okay.
Mister Council President, I recommend approval of the budget for fiscal year 2024 to 2025 as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not, go ahead and vote. Motion pass. Once again, we just have to thank staff for all the work that goes into this budget. If you ever have done a budget as a businessperson on your own, it's, it's not easy. It's, this is a big project, and to get the numbers to where the, they look good and the citizens think we're doing the best job we can with their dollars, I, I think you all need to be commended, and thank you for your time and effort on this project. With that, I would, would be adjourned. Oh, I need to close the meeting. Do I have a motion to... Yes, does anybody have any thoughts, or they want to talk about this, anything on this? Okay, if not, I'd entertain a motion to close the hearing. Okay, no other discussion? Go ahead and vote. We are adjourned. What's that? What's that, dear?
He had it. Charlie didn't vote. He hasn't voted.
Do we have, we don't? I said, we're adjourned. Get out of here.